Good evening, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council for Tuesday, September the 3rd, 2019. I'd like to call this meeting in order. The invocation this evening will be given by the Father Michael Ryan of the Epiphany Episcopal Church. Father Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Holy and gracious God, Creator of all that is and is to come, we give you thanks for the gifts of this day, for all of the ways that you are ahead of us, before us, lifting up those things which have been cast down, making new those things which have become old, carrying forth those things that need help. Shed your light on this council this evening that they may take counsel in wisdom, in mercy, in justice, and in kindness. Grant them peace and kind words for each other and for all those who they're in charge. This we pray, in the dear name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you again for coming. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Travis.
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Clark Gruber.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Scott Smith.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Wilkins.
Second. Motion, a second, to excuse Councilmember Wilkins. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She is excused. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? See none, none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is approved, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda items A through M.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through M.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Campbell.
Yes.
Gruber.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
That takes us to all business, item seven. City Council will be asked to take action related to a proposed ordinance to prohibit recreational fires in the public right-of-way. So first, we're going to need to host a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is open. All right, Brian, you want to just update us?
Yeah, so members of council, at your last meeting, the council, for the first time, discussed the proposed ordinance. As noted at that time, we received a complaint from a local resident about some members of the public showing up and essentially setting up a gas grill on the space between a truck and the parkway. As we looked at it, we realized that there was really nothing on record that says you can't do that. It's not something that we've had a lot of complaints about, but seeing the fact that we had no rules against it, it seemed like a simple solution to bring this to council and place a prohibition on the use of recreational grills, fires, et cetera, from being operated within the public right-of-way. So with that said, the council's already introduced this. For tonight, you're being asked to host the hearing and then consider action on the ordinance.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody from the public like to speak on this issue? All right, see none, you want to close it?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is closed. Next, council will be asked to consider a motion to approve a proposed ordinance to prohibit recreational fires in the public right-of-way.
I'll make that motion to approve the proposed ordinance to prohibit recreational fires in public right-of-ways.
Second.
Motion, a second. Council, discussion. Brian, what it's, I mean, this is, takes care of right-of-ways, any thoughts on just in general, I know parks and even along with that stretch of Monroe there, I mean, we have designated barbecue or, sorry.
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll put together a brief report, just explaining what is allowed within parks and the city's open spaces. The section along Monroe Boulevard was actually pulled into the park system at the time of that property acquisition, so that technically is all part of South Beach. So I'll have staff assemble, just a general FAQ on where grilling is allowed in parks and where it is not permitted.
Sounds good. That'd be helpful, because I know, I think we mentioned, some folks like to set up and just, even safety, you realize when they fire up these grills, where are they going to dispose of them, so.
Yeah.
Very good, I appreciate the update. We have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance to prohibit recreational fires in the public right-of-way. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It is approved. New business. City Council will be asked to consider approval of Resolution 2019-42, a resolution supporting Lake Michigan recreational fishing, and an update of Michigan's commercial fishing regulations.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-42, a resolution supporting Lake Michigan recreational fishing, and an update of Michigan's commercial fishing regulations.
Second.
All right, motion, a second. Brian, you want to fill us in?
Yeah, so this was actually brought to our attention by the local Steelheaders Chapter, and I think the intent was to have them here tonight to offer that information. I don't see anyone from the Steelheader, so.
I thought that was the case, okay.
I will walk you through this. This is a request for a consideration of the non-binding resolution. It is simply a document that's being asked for the council to consider stating opposition to commercial fishing from occurring. Specifically, the local Steelheaders asked that the council just envision a day where fishing net-style fishing could resume just off of the harbor in the South Haven area. This is a concern for recreational boating, as the use of nets have the potential to pull large amounts of fish from the area, as well as potentially causing damage to recreational boats. This is something that's being negotiated at the state level. The city council does not need to spend a lot of time worrying about this. It is nothing that the council's being asked to negotiate. The council's simply being asked by the Steelheaders Organization to add to their chorus, asking for greater enforcement and just a greater presence involved in the negotiations at the state level. Mr. Mayor, members of council, does that generally help understand what this is?
Yep. It's very helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody from the public like to comment on this? No Steelheaders rushing in the door? No council comments? We support the ordinance. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-42. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, it's approved. Next, city council will be asked to consider a motion to direct staff and the city attorney to prepare and present proposed changes to the planning commission's recommended marijuana ordinance in order to address medical marijuana safety compliance facilities only.
I'll make a motion to direct staff and city attorney to prepare and present proposed changes to the planning commission's recommended marijuana ordinance in order to address medical marijuana safety compliance facilities only.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Brian, you just want to fill us in, this is the safety only.
Yeah, so members of council, I've received feedback from several of you related to the upcoming November ballot issue and where that leaves one local business. At, over the last 60 days, the owners of New Age Landmark have been present and have talked about the fact that if the zoning permits them to perform medical marijuana testing as part of their lab services, that is something that they would actively pursue and would likely benefit their business. I've had council members ask me, if we are doing nothing with the other forms of the marijuana zoning conversation until after November, can, as a council, can we discuss what could be done to allow New Age Landmark to be doing those testing services? So what we're trying to do tonight is to ask the council for direction. Is that something that you would want to pursue? If so, it is a multi-step process. We are trying to be clear to the council, to the public, to anyone watching at home, that we are not in any way intending to leapfrog the November ballot. We are simply trying to follow up on the concerns being voiced by elected officials saying, we've got a local business who is asking for help in growing their business and performing those lab services is something that they have expressed interest in. So it's a little bit of a tricky balance here. We are trying to help a local business, but we are also trying to be very respectful of the fact that we do have a citizens petition that is coming in November for the overall community to decide on how we move forward on medical marijuana, I'm sorry, on recreational marijuana. So with that, we've tried to lay out a path that would allow the city council and the planning commission to start the process and focus that zoning ordinance to target simply the lab testing services. If the council would like that to occur, we would have to send it back to planning commission for amendment to the zoning ordinance proposal. It then comes back to the council for final consideration. Nick has actively worked with us on trying to lay out a path. Nick, is there anything that you would want to add to my summary?
No, that's pretty good, and just in terms of timing. Just in terms of timing, this could come to the council as early as your next meeting for an introduction of the planning commission's proposal, which has actually never been formally introduced here. And then, along with that introduction, you could make a motion directing the planning commission to essentially pare down that ordinance to where it only addresses medical marijuana safety compliance facilities. All those provisions are already there in the draft, there's just obviously a lot more there, because it addresses all 11 businesses, so it would just be a matter of cutting out what's not needed and moving forward with the safety compliance, if you wish to do that. Then it would go to the planning commission, their report would come back up to the council for final consideration.
So this really is a question to the council. In the course of the past several weeks, I've had this question asked of me several different times as to what can be done to just target this one provision, and we've come up with a plan that would allow the council to target just this one provision. But I need direction from the bulk of council before we take any steps in that direction. Mr. Mayor, I think we've got a question here.
Go ahead. I was going to check with public, but go ahead, if you want to make a comment, then I'll get the public comments.
You want to go to the public, go.
Public comments. Anybody would like to discuss this issue? Come on up. Come on up, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes to chat with us about this issue.
Gail Patterson Gladney, 914 Kalamazoo Street. I just wanted to find out, are we just talking one business that's over near LMC, the Scott Law?
Yes.
Okay. And with his businesses all set up, if they do the testing, it won't be any fumes or any kind of smell in that areas, what I understand?
That's a correct assumption.
All right, well, I think that's something that I know I was interested in, other people too, that to let him go ahead and do that testing, because right now, it doesn't have any, where it's located, it's no problem for us. I was just hoping that there would not be anything over near Ward 1. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Gail. Anybody else? All right, council comments.
Yeah, I think it's something we should really have planning commission look at. Not only are other businesses been contacting this particular business, and he is just only one, he's set up for it, there isn't any manufacturer, production sale, small amounts of it are sent to him, tested disstrait, you know, and I think we would be doing a disservice by not looking at each one of these businesses individually, each one of the different types of allowable businesses, and we won't know until after November, because this does not affect anything on the ballot, because that is recreational. This would be opening up initially to just medical, and I'm certainly in support of this, and can't wait to see it again, when you give it to planning.
We'll be back, yeah. Joe.
I've heard a lot of arguments for and con for marijuana, whether it be recreational or medical, and many of them, if not all, are valid. I have yet to hear a compelling reason why simple testing of a product behind four walls and a roof, that products are already being tested, from all kind of products all over this country, in a well-established business with a well-established businessman that pays very high salaries for people to work, why we keep holding him back on this one issue? It would seem like this is one of those issues that is a no-brainer. Opiates are tested in places around the country, and they never get into children's hands or adults' hands. It is a fraction of an opiate that gets tested for purity, and I think that's going to be the same marijuana. So I'm all for helping this businessman have a viable business and test marijuana. That doesn't mean for one second we're going to make it here, produce it here, ship it here, or sell it here. I'm talking about marijuana medical. Recreation is going to be voted on, but why in the world we hold this man up, his business, just because we want to test a fraction of an ounce to see if it's in sellable condition for wherever in the state?
What else?
I guess I share other people's concerns about this particular business, but I also wonder about the other businesses that are out there that could be affiliated with medical marijuana, and why we wouldn't want to, with the proper limitations placed on those businesses, also ask the planning commission to look at those also.
Honestly, it's, to me, it's testing in a lab. I think it makes sense. I don't see this being an issue, so.
Good. Yeah, I hope he's good. Yeah, I have been a proponent of this laboratory to do this testing from the beginning. Again, this is a product that we, as the voters of the state of Michigan, have approved, so now we need to prove it's safe. So this is a safety issue. Small samples, this is an existing business, and, I mean, to your point, there will be more, you know, applications coming, I think, for the sake of time, I would recommend we get this one done, get it to plan and get it back, and so this gentleman, because he could be tested tomorrow, and I think if we could, you know, allow him to get going with this business, that's going to help him immediately. So the others, yet to come after that, so I think those are yet to come. So on that note, we have a motion and a second to send this to the planning commission. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Next, city council will be asked to consider a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Mr. Todd Heinrich to the planning commission for a partial term expiring in June 2022.
I guess I'll make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Mr. Todd Heinrich to the planning commission for a partial term expiring in June of 2022.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Did he sneak out? He must have snuck out. Oh, I knew you were here. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself? You don't have to, but just maybe a quick, who you are, where you live, and.
Yeah, I know a few of you. If I'm approved, I'll look forward to meeting you. I look forward to meeting you, if I'm approved. I've been in touch with staff to ask them for help and orientation, and I'll look forward to doing the best I can. Full disclosure, and if, I think you have, you just got, you told me, you have my sort of partial resume that talks about some public service. Most of that's 10 years old, at least, it was about 10 years ago, and so, and there's a lot going on here that I'm, so I'm going to have a pretty steep learning curve, and the city staff has already told me they'd help me get up to speed as quickly as they can. Second thing is that, I left out of that, somebody said, well, what about all the development stuff? I used to, I just sold my business last year, I manufactured floating docks and was part of development teams, private, mostly, almost all private development teams, to develop marinas, mostly in the Midwest and on the East Coast. So just wanted to let you know, I've had that part, I've been on this side of trying to get developments through in the South Haven Township, having folks like me asking us for approval, so I look forward to meeting, getting that.
Well, hopefully, we'll have a marina project shortly, so that could be fun.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions, of me?
Any questions? Thank you for.
I'm sorry, I don't know this, but whose place are you taking?
You know, I don't know. I just got a call on Friday, and the holiday weekend was in there, it was in there, so.
Is that to be known?
Yeah. Yeah. Amanda Sukop, stepped down from the planning commission, she's since moved from the city.
Welcome, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Todd Heinrich to the planning commission. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you again. Next, citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda, and if you have anything, you're welcome to come on up and just state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes to share your thoughts.
I just want to throw this out for you, so that you can start thinking about it for next summer.
Name and address, there you go.
Oh, I'm Connie Schaefer, 735 North Shore Drive, sorry.
Thanks, Connie.
Okay. I want to bring this up, because I live on North Shore Drive, and North Shore Drive is a very active, very busy, very crazy traffic area. Okay, so here's some of the things that I want to throw out to you, and hopefully, it will get discussed, and hopefully, we can do something. It is very dangerous to live on North Shore Drive, but I've been there 35 years, and I've survived so far, so I'm hoping that I can hang in for a few more. But, you know, since we've had the new road put in, which I'm very grateful for, and we've had a lot of improvements, there is a serious problem with entering and exiting, mostly exiting your driveway, because the parking is right up to your driveway. I have almost gotten hit several times trying to get out my driveway. Somewhere, somehow, you need to take a look at the distance that we have to pull our car out into the street. Yesterday, or, no, a couple of days ago, and this is another one of my concerns, is the golf carts. They're up and down, they're on the sidewalk, you know, if you're out walking your dog, and all of a sudden, here's this, you know, or you're just walking, I see people walking their kids, and then there's this golf cart zooming down the driveway, or the street, and zooming down the sidewalk. But mostly, it's the speed and not being able to see. So I'm pulling out of my driveway, you can't see the golf carts, because I've got all these cars here. I inch out, inch, inch, inch. I have cars honk at me, flip me the bird, call me names, because I'm inching out. They probably can't see me any better than I can see them. So, and there was a golf cart there. Fortunately, I don't just drive out, but, you know, there's nothing that you can see them coming. There's not a big flag or anything on them, so you can see them coming over the top of other parked cars. So I'm very concerned about this. Somebody's going to get hurt, and, you know, if I'm trying to get in and out of my driveway, is it my fault? I hope not, because I'm very, very cautious with getting out, and like I said, I'm treated very rudely frequently from people that are coming from baseline. So I don't know the answer, but you've got a lot of brains up here, that I hope they can come up with an answer, so that we don't have any accidents, be it with a car, be it with a golf cart, be it with kids riding these little carts that they ride, and they're going along, and I'm like, oh, boy, oh, boy. You know, if he'd have gone speeding by my driveway, I would not have had a breath of a chance to see him and not pull out. Who's fault would that have been? I hope it's not mine, but it certainly doesn't look good. So that is a very big concern of mine. The other night, I was out walking my dog, there were six motorcycles going down North Shore Drive, heading towards town. They had to be going 50 miles, 60 miles an hour, loud, fast, horrible, and somebody was pulling out of their driveway, and they slammed on their brakes, and I'm, all the lights on all of those motorcycles slammed on their brakes. Thank heavens, nobody got hurt, nobody got hit, but it's serious. I'm telling you, it is a serious problem, and somebody's going to get hit, and I don't want to be on the side of the one that hits them, because I can't see them. Or I'm out there, and then all of a sudden, somebody comes flying up from baseline. So anyway, that's why I'm here, to say that we do have a serious danger there. We have a lot of rentals that don't understand this, and so I'm filling your plate for fall, so that maybe we can figure something out by spring, so that we don't have all this horrible potential for some serious damage. And that would be just heartbreaking, if you were doing what you're supposed to do, and you were in the middle of it. So thank you for your consideration. I know it's hard work, but it's even harder sitting there, watching it happen. So good luck. If I can be of more help, call me. If you don't want me to come, I'll come anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your comments. Anybody else? Don, come on up.
I'm Don Bemis, 740 Phillips. I appreciate what she said. We see the same thing on Phillips Street a lot of the time. As I recall, there is a clear vision requirement for driveways, not just for corners, and it might be good to look and make sure that the parking spaces and the yellow stripes match that clear vision requirement. It would make it much better for the people coming out of their drives. Thank you.
Thanks, Don, appreciate it. Gail, come on.
Okay, I have some news from the county. If any of you read the newspaper or saw some of the news, you might have heard about the historic courthouse murals. The commissioners voted not to remove, which would have damaged the murals, we believe, or cover the murals in the courthouse. The judges asked to have the paintings removed or covered, but we weren't able to do that, and the judges felt that the images depicted an inappropriate display in the courthouse, so. That discussion may come up again, so I would like anybody who would like to send me emails or call to let me know your views, please do so. I only had one person in our area who I talked to, who felt that they should not be covered up, so I'd like to get information. Okay, the, let's see. Jail inmate medical care Lieutenant Manny De La Rosa presented a request to contract with Advance Correctional Health Care Incorporated to provide health care for the jail, and the commissioners approved the request, and the annual cost is approximately $397,956 for that care, and this contract can be renewed annually. Land conservancy Peter Turlo asked for the county's support for the acquisition of the royal property by the South Haven Area Recreational Authority, which consists of a 48-acre parcel on Lake Michigan, and that request was granted by the commissioners. Domestic preparedness Lieutenant Bob Kirk requested the creation of a full-time assistant director of domestic preparedness. The previous position had been partially funded by Region 5 as a regional planner. These duties are no longer funded, and these hours will be added to the new assistant director position, and there are sufficient funds available to support that position, and the request was approved. I have some information sent to me by the friend of the court. I will give this to Brian, and if you can share that with the public, if anyone's interested. There's going to be a celebration of 100 years of service by the. There's going to be a celebration of 100 years of service by the Friend of the Court, and it says, "Please come join us for an open house to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the legislation establishing the Friend of the Court." That's Friday, September 6th. So that's why I'm reading that now, because you don't have much time to prepare for that. That's 2:00 to 4:30, and that's at the 219 Paw Paw Street in Paw Paw. On September 9th, on Mondays from 5:30 to 8:30, there's a four-week workshop to help understand the effects of traumatic events on children and what to do to help them cope. And that's open to all parents, caregivers, and foster parents. That's at the VBISD in Lawrence. It's free, and it begins, as I said, September 9th. And here's some more information on that. Teens growing up with fetal alcohol spectrum disorders and their families are invited to come to caregiver workshop, and that's September 20th, and Friday, 9:30 to 12, at the Hartford Family Resource Center. And then we have some other items, but I will just give that to Brian. So if anyone's interested in connexus for teens, young people looking for job-related training and work experience, and then also trauma and cross-racial training, we have that information. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Gail. Appreciate the update. Anybody else? All right, that takes us to DPW Director's Update. Bill, in the House.
Good evening, Your Honor, City Council. I'm going to give the council updates on projects going on in DPW right now. Splash pad, plans are still at the state level. We're waiting to hear back from them. We were hoping last week to hear something, but we have not. That really does affect, initially, when I was doing this report, I was hoping to have bids to City Council by September 16th, but I don't expect that. It's going to probably be October 7th. Anytime, because of the, we had to change the plan, and of course, anytime you change the plan, you have to be approved by the state. So the Planning Commission, we had to add the crosswalk and then the additional concrete or the sidewalk connecting the two, and so that put us a little bit, but we have been diligent about getting a hold of DEQ, but we have to weigh that. We have to balance not being, you know, bothersome, and so we're, but we will call, we'll keep calling, and hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have an answer from them.
Would you like a picture of a bunch of elementary school children with frowns on their faces?
That would probably help. The road diet is out for bids. We actually, bids will be due September 11th. 16th, we'll have something to City Council, and the work will be completed October, November timeframe. Kids Corner, the playground equipment is at the shop, ready to be installed by the end of this week. We'll have the turf in on the 13th, and then the 16th, we'll be doing restorations. Engineering, 8th Street will be starting next week, so that's a big thing. So just, we'll put a news release out, just letting people know that it'll be a little challenging to get to DPW, but we have been keeping in contact who would do it as well, just to make sure, keeping them informed. Kalamazoo resurfacing, that was on City Council's agenda for tonight, and Comptons already wants to be out there, and they put notifications out, and they want to be out there milling, so they want to get rolling on that. Cleaning the detention basins, thank you for approving that on the consent agenda, and we'll be proceeding with that. South Beach storm outfall, we'll be digging out. Remember last spring, we tried digging that up, but then the outfall was missing, so we're going to connect that, and hopefully that'll improve the drainage, because since I've been here, it's always been a drainage issue in the South Beach, so hopefully that'll resolve it. Dumpster enclosure, that'll be September timeframe. Good news to report to City Council, our Aleworth CMAC project that was submitted was approved for 2022. The CMAC funding is $134,783 for a total of 315. So that's a fiscal year 2022. The project limits are Kalamazoo to La Grange. Phoenix Street CMAC funding was approved for that project for 2021. We're looking at $144,783 with a total project of 241,036. The limits are 73rd to 71, no, 73rd to veterans. Charging station, this is something I'm probably going to see more of. We got approved for a charging station at Huron Street Parking Lot, and that'll be for 2022. So small urban funding, Phoenix Street, that section we just took over, so we got some smaller urban funding for that for 2021. We're getting about $320,000, and that's a $400,000 project from 73rd to 71st and a half. We're working with GMP, GMB at this time for security improvements at DPW, and plus a feasibility study. We expect that from them soon. Water and sewer, HydroCorp still continues to do crossconnection inspections on commercial and residential. We are still working on the material inventory due to DEQ on the 2020, and lead and copper samples will be collected this September. The City Council have any questions for me on any of the projects or anything else in DPW?
What's going on with Center Street?
Yes, big one, Center Street, which I don't...
I just thought we'd throw that one out there, I think.
Yes, that'll be started actually pretty soon. That'll be started actually, I think actually, two weeks from now, so. Big project actually, it'll be going in phases, so that's a complete reconstruct of Center Street from Williams to Michigan. So the plan is to phase that, so they want to complete one before they start the other and put the concrete in. So it's water, sewer, amenities, of course. One good feature actually is a living wall that's going to be put in here. So once this is complete, we're going to have a, it's going to be a new downtown. It'll look nice.
It'll be nice, and businesses will stay open, so keep shopping downtown.
Yes.
On Center Street.
Yes, we will have tailgate meetings as we do every project. I like having tailgate meetings because every week, then people know where to go to, and if they have any issues or concerns, they'll go there. We'll have full-time inspection, plus our staff there as well, because in downtown projects like this, you need to have as many people there as you can. Like you said, the businesses have to stay open.
Bill, are we going to have the phases out here on the wall that we're going to take the construction on, or at least like a rough idea? So the businesses can understand what and when certain things are going to happen?
I can do that. Like something like a, like a, would you prefer something geographical with timeframes by it?
Timeframes, you know, that way they realize, because sort of like Sukasa, for instance, you know, being right there, it would probably be nice to know when that street is completely gone, or so on, so forth.
And when we do actually, just encourage everybody to go to the tailgate meetings, at least the first couple of times, to get their names on the, because I do an email that I send out. I do an email actually that shows the progress, and I include a timetable with that, because initially, when we first do that timetable, Chris, it's going to, I always like to compare them from beginning to end, because they're totally different, but still, that, once a week, they're going to get an update. So please encourage them to, and if they can't, just to email me, and I create a mass emailing and I send it out, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. Go to the meetings, they're helpful.
Yes, they are.
And is a dumpster really going to happen in September? I only say that because I think every month, we just put a different month on there.
It has been, it has been, and I apologize, it hasn't been in the forefront, and it should have been, so. I was just talking about that today, I said, "We need to get this done," because I keep telling City Council, and I just keep changing the month, and this is getting tired.
That's okay. By next year, it'll be fine. They've got a lot going on, if you look at three projects alone for us, so. Okay, that was it. I just wondered.
Be busy. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
City Manager comments.
So members of council, I've been watching your eyebrows raise as you're hearing the unending noise of sirens. We do have teams working right now at the North and South Beach. Unfortunately, some people are out on the piers and were swept off, so that's why you're hearing all the noise.
I was down there tonight riding a bicycle that I was testing out, and they had, there's some, I don't know, some crews down there with some cameras. This is prior, and I was looking out onto the piers, hoping there wasn't anyone out there, and there wasn't at that time, and it was ridiculous, the amount of waves coming over there, so.
Yeah. So we'll have a news release out later tonight with any details that we can provide. Back to the topic of the council meeting, the council will be asked to consider going to closed session. I would just ask that we allow for just a five-minute recess, make a couple of phone calls, see what's going on, and then I would ask the council to consider adjourning back to do their closed session in Conference Room B.
Very good. Thanks, Brian.
Yep.
You need to sneak out. Got it. All right. Council comments, start on the left.
No comment.
No comment.
I will say, related to North Shore Drive and golf carts, my golf cart's actually taller than my car's. The, I was there when the motorcycles did screech, they were going about the same speed as my golf cart, but I will say the person backing up did not look both ways. They looked one way, and I was waiting to see them look, and luckily, the motorcycle people did notice that they didn't look either, and they did stop. I think the problem is if we wanted to, golf carts are quiet, I think that's a big problem, but I think so are Priuses and so are, you know, hybrids. I haven't seen any on sidewalks, but, so if anyone does have pictures of that, let us know. You know, I think that's something we need to address, other than that. That's all I've got.
Thanks.
No comments.
He's left, but one quick comment. A couple of weeks ago, I voiced a concern from a resident about torn-up sidewalks, and a pregnant woman actually fell on one of them at Erie and Monroe, which is a very busy intersection. I called Brian, and literally, within days, the sidewalk was torn up, and within a good week, week and a half, all new sidewalks right down Monroe and right down Erie. I'm just amazed the city reacted so quick, and I can tell you, the resident is thrilled that we heard her. So I just want to thank whoever was responsible, whoever, thank you very much.
Very good. All right. We survived Labor Day, nice weekend in town, just a challenge to our locals. Remember, it's time for us to come back out and get out of hiding and come back downtown and support our businesses for the fall and winter, right? They're looking for us, especially the folks on Center Street, for the next long winter. At the Ward 1 picnic, there was a nice gentleman, Walter Ashmore, who I heard he turned 101. He's at River Ridge, so if you're driving by there, Walter's 101 years old. Several of us got to meet him at that picnic, so just want to say happy birthday, Walter. So on that note, we're, so we're actually, this will end the broadcast, we're going to then go into closed session, so the audio will be ending now. So I will seek a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act to discuss a confidential attorney-client privileged memorandum regarding legal issues related to federal, state, and local non-discrimination laws.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a roll call.
Gruber?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Very good. We will go into closed session, so we'll take a five-minute break. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and have a great night.